And those who are here tonight, we thank you for your interest in Anson County Schools. And we also say thank you to the folks who are watching us via the Internet. At this time, we're at item number seven, which is recognitions, and I call on Dr. Riley.
We have several recognitions, and we're going to come up here. I now see some of our students, our student leaders here. A lot of folks are doing, participating in spring activities. So we will run through those principles. If you're here, if you'll come up, and if your students aren't here, if you'll be so kind to come get their certificates, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Lylesville Elementary School in the District-wide Spelling Bee Competition held in January. And our first winner tonight, if you'll come up, Jake Caranto. Great. Come on up. I won't bite you. Congratulations. If you'll stand up here. We'll try to get you some company up here real quick, or at least not come over. The winner at Morven Elementary is Blake McIver. Blake here? Blake here, will you come up and join Drake and be with him up here if you wouldn't mind? Thank you. Yes. Thank you. I always count on administrative staff to let them hear you clap from a distance. Pete from Palkton Elementary School, J C on Hancock, was I close, Dr. Steagall? J C, there you are, come on over. Thanks for letting me in. Congratulations. Thank you. Good job. Wazeboro Elementary, Alia Bennett. Alia, thank you. And Mrs. Hyatt, thank you, thank you. She's going to forget me. Thank you. And Ms. Hyatt told me how to pronounce it, and I still messed it up. Wazeboro Primary School for the Spelling Bee Competition, Carson Smith. Come on up. Dr. Gerald. Thank you. Anson Middle School, Bradley Ba- Ba- Balcom. Balcom. Come on up. Come on up, Bradley. Oh, yeah. Sorry. Yeah, I understand. I tried to pull, I forgot to pull out the left hand. Anson Middle School, also Spelling Bee Competition winner Alexis Timich. And that's you again. Thank you. Thank you. Let her here. And our overall winner and winner at Ansonville Elementary School, Lillian Blaylock. Yay. Well, we knew Lillian couldn't be here. Thank you. Appreciate you so much. Yeah, thank you. I'll try to get out and see the students and congratulate them. Take a picture of all these tall students. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Good job, guys. Proud of you. I'm, I, is, are there any other students that are here for recognition tonight? Yeah, we will, we'll come back with the other ones to do that. Okay, we'll just come back with the others. Again, let's give them one more round of applause for our spelling. Thank you.
At this time, we're at item number eight, which is public comment. Anson County Board of Education welcomes comments from our, excuse me, before we do, thank y'all for coming tonight and helping us recognize these young people. Anson County Board of Education welcomes comments from our parents, students, and community. The public comment period is open for members of the public to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about matters of public concern, the performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of the educational program of school facilities, and/or other matters. Each person is granted three minutes for his or her presentation. This part of the meeting is for the board to hear matters of interest or concern from the public. However, obscene or vulgar statements, personal attacks, and statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or imminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. As per board practice, the board will not address or respond to public comment except for clarification until the superintendent has had an opportunity to investigate the presented issues and/or the board reviews the issue with legal counsel if warranted. At this time, we have Ms. Sheena Kendall, who has signed up for public comment. Ms. Kendall.
Hello, everyone. Please forgive me, I'm a little nerved. So I want to focus on three main words today. Mishandled, insulted, and intimidated. On April 1st, there was an incident with my child and another student. Early that morning, I was not notified, according to my son, it was about maybe nine, 10 o'clock in the morning. I wasn't notified till 1:45 in the afternoon of the incident. I feel like that was mishandling because if an incident happens early on and it includes your child, you are expected to be notified as soon as possible. I was notified by a principal designee of the day, which I have no recourse, no problem with that. But when I went to ask questions, I was told, well, come back tomorrow and talk to the principal because she has the answers for you. That led me to ask the question, well, why wasn't she the one to contact me? And why am I not having this conversation with her? What she's gone for today? I was later let know that she reached out to the other student's parents, but she did not contact me. So there was a meeting set up because I'm inquiring in reference to my son's safety and, you know, just his, my concern for him. There was a meeting set up. I did meet with school administration following that. And that goes to my next word, insulted. We did discuss a plan being put in place so that my child could succeed and finish out the rest of the year. When I received this plan, it was a five-second prompt for Chat G P T that not even got changed. The format didn't get changed. It was just copied, a couple of words and names inserted, and it was sent as an S E L, social emotional learning plan for my son, which kind of confused me because he was not the problem in this incident. Also, the word again, insulted, because I have Chat G P T, I use it for my business. So the, when I saw the format, I'm like, I was told this plan would take time and effort, but it didn't. It took five seconds on Chat G P T. I then went to Chat G P T and typed in an S E L plan for my son and got the exact same thing. There was then another meeting that was set up where I expressed my concern because my number one job is my time out. I'm sorry.
We are at item number nine, the chair's report. Do you care if Mr. Ross comes up and addresses the D O T? Mr. Ross, could you come and share with the board the conversation we had just a minute ago? This concerns the road at the new middle school.
All right, I've had, good evening, everybody. I've had several conversations with some folks since the last board meeting. A plan that was conducted in 2019 by the Tims Group was shared with the delayed start not in place that was in, that was done in the, in the plan that in 2024 that came out that was shared by the D O T. And in that plan, they, they had turning lanes into the new middle school, and they also had added turning lanes at the intersection of 74 and Anson High Road, which, when I reviewed that plan and I saw that, that I thought is what would help in this situation as far as the flow of traffic. But after talking with Mr. Efferson, with the, he's the engineer with the, the D O T, when that new analysis came out in 2024 with the recommendation for the staggered start, that kind of trumped the plan that they did back in 2019. So they have agreed to revisit that 2019 plan again to see if, if any more recommendations could be made that were more aligned to that plan versus the, the plan that came out in 2024. There is still some confusion with the finances for, for this project. I think D O T is still thinking that we're talking about the road access between the two schools. And I think the, when that gets cleared up, it, it's more toward the state roads, the Anson High Road and the, the highway where we want the, the additions for the turning lanes put in. Because the, the grant that Dr. Truman was talking about, that was for the access road. So it's two different talking points that need to be discussed with D O T. So that's kind of where we are, but we had progress from the last board meeting. They are willing to look at the possibility of, of the turning lanes again. However, the, it's going to come down to a time thing now and resources and funding to make that happen, of course, with where we are with the new middle school being opened up in just over a year, hopefully. So we're, we're kind of hoping that we're going to have some meetings here in the next week or two to, to get an idea on next steps and, and what they consider the best option for the flow of traffic. But that, that's all the, the latest updates that we have right now, or I have for you right now.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Any questions for Mr. Ross? Are there any, do any of my colleagues wish to make any comments about their visits to the school?
If she would let the superintendent know of what the issue is, and we'll direct them to speak with you. We make a point not to have conversation, but we do appreciate you coming.
All right, at this time, we're at item number 10, superintendent's report.
First on the agenda for the report tonight is the North Carolina Department of Public Construction Early Literacy Presentation. So at this time, Dr. Roseburg, do you want to introduce our, our representative? And, and I know Ms. Talent is ready to, to go. She's going to sing the National Anthem, I understand. I just sprung that on her.
She's a little bit nervous. Y'all be gentle. It's our first board meeting. But I would like to present to you all Mrs. Crystal Merk, who's going to be with Ms. Tiffany Talent this evening to give our report on the status for early literacy in Anson County. And I would like to say that Ms. Talent has done a phenomenal job this year supporting not only her target schools, which are Morven Elementary and Lylesville Elementary, but our entire district. And so we are just very impressed with her growth and development and her role as our D P I, Early Literacy Specialist, but serving Anson County Schools. And I know that she came up in the ranks here in our district, and you all should be very proud of the work that Tiffany Talent has done for us thus far. So I present to you, Ms. Tiffany Talent and Mrs. Crystal Merk from D P I.
Good afternoon. I am Tiffany Talent. I am the Early Literacy Specialist for the county. And we are going to look just real quick at an overview of the things that I do here in the district. And then we are going to look into our M-class data from beginning of the year to middle of the year. And then we're going to look at our progress monitoring, which is where we've done a lot of focus this year, as well as individual reading plans that we are implementing. So I, I support two. I have two priority schools, but I also support all of the elementary schools in the district with professional development and, and letters sustainability, as well as M-class, and just really anything that they need me literacy-wise. But I also, I attend literacy PLCs and data PLCs at my priority schools. And then I, and I support the instructional coaches during those times with data protocols and literacy strategies and curriculum support. I also conduct walkthroughs and observation and give feedback to teachers to support them in growing in their literacy instruction and also give some feedback to the coaches so that they know as well areas that they can work on. I also model lessons as well for teachers or co-teach, really whatever they, the teachers need me to do and how I can support them with the literacy instruction. And then with letters, I have begun facilitating some of the letters training within the district. I also monitor teacher progress on the letters platform so I can see how they're progressing in their training on the online portion. I send bi-weekly updates to Dr. Roseburg and the principals, as well as instructional coaches on that progress so that they can keep an eye out on it. And also part of that report is their M-class progress monitoring fidelity report. And then I also helped create the letters pacing guides so that the teachers know what they need to finish by what date so that they, it's not, they're not waiting till the end of the year to do it all. It's kind of split up throughout the year. And then I also have conducted P, um, professional development across the district. So I've worked on data protocols. Crystal came out and supported with going over with the principals and then also with the coaches and the teachers as well. And then I've also led those data protocols in my priority schools to support them. And then I've also, teachers requested some more information about utilizing small group instruction within their C K L A block. So we did a P D, a professional development on that. And then Crystal also came and worked with principals on individual reading plans or I R Ps. And then she worked with the principals, and then I in turn went and worked with the coaches on it as well. And to support with C K L A, we've also created a C K L A playbook where it has all the routines that we see in our, our reading curriculum and step-by-step how to do it. And I'm working on creating newsletters to go along with it and presentations that coaches can use to support their teachers in implementing those routines. So this is our, yes, sorry. Yes, sir. B O Y is beginning of the year, and M O Y is middle of the year. Yes, sir. Okay, so this is our M-class data for beginning of the year and middle of the year. And it's a comparison so we can see how our students have grown in M-class. This is the, just the composite score, so it's all of the scores together. It's not each individual, individual score. So in the light blue on the graph, it is representing where the percentage of students that were at or above benchmark at the beginning of the year. So in kindergarten, we had 21% at or above benchmark. In first grade, 59%, second grade, 40%, and third grade, we had 42%. So in the dark blue, what we see is at the middle of the year, the percentage of students across the district that were at or above benchmark. So we see growth in kindergarten. It jumped from 21% to 47%, which is a 20%, 26% increase. And then first grade, we had a little bit of a dip. We went from 59% to 51%. So that's a negative 8%. So there's an 8% decrease there. But then in second grade, we had an increase of 8%. And in third grade, we had an increase of 2%. So because of the, um, the data, we've been really concerned with our, with first grade and how we can support first grade literacy instruction, which is where the C K L A playbook came along. We did walkthroughs with some other colleagues from the Office of Early Learning, and we talked about strategies we can put in place. And one of those things was coming up with professional development and taking bits of routines at a time, one at a time, and less mastering that and moving to the, to the next one and so forth, which is where we came up with the playbook. So all of that information is in one place for the instructional coaches to use at their schools to support their teachers with C K L A and implementing that.
Tiffany, excuse me. This data is, is, what it is, is it, you get the data from what Read to Achieve, M-CAS or this? How do you get this data?
This is from Amplify. So Ampli, in Amplify, we have, they do the M-class assessments.
M-class, okay, right.
So that's where this data came from.
Okay, all right. I know the third is Read to Achieve, but you don't get it, data from that, do you?
This goes along kind of with Read to Achieve?
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. This is the entire district. So this is all of your elementary schools, and I believe this is just K3. So all of your elementary school K3 students together.
I was in Anson last February, I think, maybe like four weeks on the job. So I'm excited to be back in front of you guys. But another way that you can think about these composite scores, this, these are risk indicators. Okay, so your E O G is sort of that diagnostic in the year. It's the autopsy of what, what your students can do. These are risk indicators. So when you look at that kindergarten data, 21% of your students were at or above benchmark. If you subtract that from 100, that's a lot of your students in kindergarten that were not proficient at the beginning. But look at the jump that happened with instruction that happened for them. So their risk decreased, right? So the higher we can go here, the less, the more that risk is going to decrease. So we look at our devil's force more as risk indicators, not necessarily as our students are proficient or not proficient. Risk indicators, if there's no intervention, this is an indicator of risk for that student. So good way to think about it.
And you've looked at this data across other districts. How does it compare to every grade?
Ah, that's a really good question. And everybody wants to know the comparison between third grade, because that's where we, that's where we start our E O G. So you will see, it should not be a surprise. A student should not get to third grade. Progress monitoring's been a huge push for you guys. Dr. Roseburg has been really on that since she came into this, in her new position. We've been really paying attention to that. If teachers are utilizing progress monitoring between those benchmark periods, they will know if a student is making progress towards their benchmark goal. If they're continuing to make progress, you're going to see success in third grade. You're going to see success. Is there a correlation between if the student's proficient here or will they be proficient? I can't tell you that because it's like comparing apples to oranges. You really can't compare the two because they, they test two different things. But what we do know is our students that leave kindergarten, first grade, that's why that first grade is so critical that Tiffany was just talking about. For you guys, that first grade is where the magic happens. We got to make sure those kids are leaving. When you came in at 59% of the first graders who came into first grade, this test is done three weeks into school. So that, that's a kindergarten. That's an indication that they're doing what needs to happen. So we've got to keep pushing that and making sure more and more of your students are leaving those early grades with a lower risk indicator.
Is there any way to get that information, like by the school, by chance? And what does this data look like statewide?
You guys are right on, on track with the state. So there's nothing in here, I can't tell you that right off the top of my head. I don't have it right, in my eyes, right in my head. Do you have it, Tiffany? We, we should have thought about that. But I will tell you this, there's nothing glaring in the state report when you compare the two, but we can certainly get that information for you and give you a comparison from Anson to the state. That kindergarten data.
So looking at our data, we have, as Crystal said, Dr. Roseburg has been working real hard with progress monitoring. So every two weeks, I send a report to principals and coaches to let them know how their teachers are progress monitoring. So this is the progress monitoring fidelity report. And what this does is tell us how many students have been progress monitored, the percentage of students that have been progress monitored in that window. And our students, when you see well below and below, those are, so your well below students are your ones that are really are far below. They need the most support, right? And then your below students are not as far below as them. So your well below students, those are your students that are going to get progress monitored every 10 days. And then your, your below level students are the ones that are going to get progress monitored every 15 days. So what this, the way I've organized the chart, you see your well below students. So that first time, that, that first progress monitoring window, that's where you see P M 1. 39% of those students were progress monitored, okay, within that 10-day window. And then for your below, your below student, students, 80% were done in that 15-day window. So if you look across, it's kind of been inconsistent as far as the percentage of students that are getting progress monitored within those windows. And that's where we want to make sure that our students are getting progress monitored with fidelity so that we can monitor how they're progressing and if the interventions that the teachers are doing, if they're working or not, so that we can adjust an instruction based on those things. So since we've been doing, that first chart is from beginning of the year to middle of the year. And then the second chart is middle of the year to end of the year. So since we've been sending out those progress monitoring fidelity reports, we are seeing some increase in the percentage of students that are being progress monitored within the window that they have for them. And as of right now, we are in the, the end of the year assessment window. So where you see this, the N A, that just means there, we didn't have that many progress monitoring windows within that timeframe because we have started our end of the year assessments.
How is this information being communicated to parents?
That's a good question that I'm, I'm not really prepared to answer at the time. They do send home a progress monitoring, progress report monthly. So the students are getting progress monitored, and that information is sent home to parents. It's just if they're getting progress monitored with, within that every single 10-day window, that's not what's being sent home to parents. But they do get a progress monitoring update every month. Right. Yes, sir. So some of your students get pulled out for reading interventionist. Some of the students are getting interventions from the teacher. And then they do have the M-class boost as well. So they have the options depending on what the teacher and the instructional coach have decided based on theirs. have decided based on theirs. So the next thing we've been working on is IRP. So SB 387 requires that any child that is below level to get an individual reading plan. So this is something, this reading plan outlines a specific reading skill that the child needs support in, and the interventions that are going to, that will be done to support the student with those, with that skill. So it also has goals and benchmarks for reading growth, how they're going to monitor the progress for the student, as well as instructional practices that are based on the science of reading and the curriculum that's being used, as well as any additional services that are provided for the students. So we have been working on getting these, the process for this and the training for these for our principals and our coaches. So on March 20th, Crystal came down and she did a training for principals. And then on March 26th, we trained the coaches, the instructional coaches, on the process for IRPs so that we can start implementing the IRPs next year with our students. So within IRP, parents have to be notified of individual reading plans. There is a letter that has to be sent home for each student for their reading plan. And then they also, so they'll be kept up to date on the interventions and the progress of their student. So as far as implementation expectations for IRPs, Dr. Roseborough has created a timeline. So in September, that's when those initial assessments are done, so when we're doing those M-class assessments. So that's the first step. And then after we do those assessments, after we get our data from M-class, then the individual reading plans are going to be developed. And this is developed as a team, so the teachers, the coach, principal, all working together to come up with a plan to support each student. And then based off of the data and then what interventions that they're going to need to support. And then after they create their IRPs, this is a document that gets changed based on data. So after they've had some time to do interventions and progress monitor, they're going to review their IRPs, go back, look at them in October or November, and evaluate, is it effective? Is it working? And if it is working, great, we're going to keep doing it. If it's not working, then we need to revise what we're doing and change what we're doing. So then there's going to be a second review of IRPs in January after we've done the middle of the year evaluation so that we can see again, is it working? Is it not working? Do we need a new goal? That type of thing. And then they'll do some more interventions, progress monitor, and again, review their IRPs again in March to April. And then the final review is going to be at the end of the year after they've done their end-of-the-year assessments, so that they can see how effective it was and then start thinking about recommendations for next year, because IRPs follow the student. So it's not just for this year that IRP can follow the student for as long as they need it. Any questions about that? That was all I had. Thank you so much.
Well, Ms. Merk, if you'll just stay around, just a couple of points to highlight from Tiffany's presentation. We can't stress enough the importance of progress monitoring, because if we're not doing so at the beginning, that impacts what we're getting at the end. And so we are seeing that the less we progress monitor, the less successful our students are in terms of literacy and having that firm foundation in literacy in grades third, fourth, and fifth grade. And so we are pushing very hard for making sure that teachers have the gift of time to do the progress monitoring. That was one of our concerns. That's why we had asked for some required workdays for our teachers to work on the individual reading plans in addition to the parent conferences that have to occur in terms of early literacy. So we want to thank you for approving the request for the required workdays. But most importantly, we also got to give our schools some time too, to work with the teachers and have some data talks and some data dives to support them in the work of doing the progress monitoring. And it's not just about the what, but it's the how. So now our team is talking about how can we show our teachers, especially our teachers in the early grades, how to fit this into the school day? So we put some guidelines in place regarding master scheduling, like what, if you have 120 literacy, 120 minutes within your literacy block, what does that look like in the early grades? Because it looks different from what happens in third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade and on up. So we have to be very intentional about giving our teachers the time to work on literacy skills with individual students, in small groups, whole group, and center activities, because they have to have that time to collaborate and do some of the activities that we know that they need to do. But our teachers are supposed to be taking observatory notes when those kids are engaged in literacy, as well as they should be progress monitoring what it is that our students can do, what it is that our students need to improve on, and then communicating that adequately to families. And so the progress notes that Ms. Tiffany Talent talked about, they should also be going home in their progress reports and report cards so that the families can pull out the report and see how well they're doing on early literacy. So did you want to say anything else about us working on the how? Because we are going to work on the how. We have to show our teachers how to get some of this in during the instructional day.
And I have to say this, I think we keep this team on Friday mornings from 9:00 to 9:30. We meet Zoom. Sometimes I'm here, I've been here a lot helping with some of the planning. And I want to reassure you that all the work that's being done in K1 and 2, I promise you we'll see that result in the grade. It will happen. And this team is working so hard. Tiffany has really risen to the occasion. We have put a lot on her plate since January, a lot at one time, and she has really rose to the occasion, and she is supporting your teachers. And that is the most important piece, is our teachers. They make the magic happen. They're the ones that are in the buildings. They're the ones working with students, and we have to, we have to support them. And I appreciate that you all have supported them with the gift of time. In elementary world, a gift of time, if you've ever been in one, the time is of the essence for them. So I am happy to be here, and I'm looking forward to continue my support for Anson, being in your buildings and seeing you. And I encourage you, if you get a chance, follow Tiffany around sometime and see what she does.
Yes, interesting.
Because she does a really great job, and go see our students. I'm really hopeful for you guys.
I have a quick question regarding that. It sounds like that's a lot of work for teachers to progress monitor each child, but is it a necessary thing? Is there any way we can somehow take a load, is there anything we can do to be creative of taking a load off of them by?
That's a really great question. So, and we get that a lot, because it involves a lot for teachers. And I was an elementary teacher, so I can say that, it's a lot. So what happens is for your students that are in that most at-risk category, I don't want to call them red, but that's the color they'll be in the most at-risk, they are the most intensive. And we do have to progress monitor those students every 10 days. That's law. It's written in the law, every 10 instructional days. So it doesn't count your weekends, so that gives you some time there. 15 days for your yellow students are your next most at-risk students, and your green and blues are once a quarter. Okay, once a quarter. Excuse me, once a quarter. So what we like to say is, yes, it's a 10-day rule, but you might get two or three on day eight, you might get two or three on day 11, two or three on day 12, one on day nine. Another student, you're like, wow, he really did a great job. I'm going to get him next week. So they do have some flexibility in there. We don't hold too fast to that rate. What we look for is the percentage of students that are progress monitored. So if it's 92% of our students, we're, Crystal Merk, I'm not going to talk to her, says, it's okay if it's in that nine-day range to 12-day range. We're touching that student, right? So we try to encourage our teachers not to get too bogged down on the day tip, because you do have a lot of your classrooms. We hope it's going to be less. That's my hope. That's how a lot of students that are at that real high-risk level. So we can't, we can't risk waiting 20 days to touch that student to make sure our instruction is working. We got to adjust quick. So that's what progress monitoring really is about, is if our instruction is working. So that's why we can get that eight to 12, we're okay with that.
And so that's our concern.
Keep popping up. I'm sorry. How long does it take to do this monitoring per student?
Yeah, it's a great question. One to two days. One to two days. It's a very quick program. They can go in and come out. So I used to carry my iPad around in the mornings, and if a kid would come, I knew I was going to progress monitor. So that's what Tiffany does. She works with, and the instructional coaches at the building, work with teachers to figure out, okay, I have lots of 20, there's 14 students that need to be, or at that high risk, we hope it'll be less than that if our interventions are working. But how do we get that in? When do we progress monitor these students? And when can it happen during the day? It can happen anytime. It doesn't have to happen during the year-long block.
And that's why it's important for us to explain the how and do some demos with them so they know. We try to tell them at least two a day. Our concern is when our percentages get really high, that we have not progress monitored our students that we know are severely at risk, and it's the end of the window. That's very concerning for us right now, so.
And what we always like to say with progress monitoring, it should never be a surprise to receive a message at BOY, ever, because you will know it. It will come up in your progress monitoring. Now, they may still be behind at BOY, but they should have made growth. They should have made growth somewhere, and that progress monitoring can really help them out.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you very much.
With that, there's no other information regarding student learning unless the team here tonight, is there anything else you all would like to share? Middle School Project that we have, just, if you don't mind, I'll go through the other item. There's not a lot of update. With the break last week, we did not participate in meetings, but by the May 19th meeting, we should have quite a bit of information for you regarding the Middle School Project. So that's it. Dr. Rose.
We're now at item 12. By board action, we have moved A01 to new business is Z01. So at this time, under our consent agenda, we are approving the proposed budget for 2025, 2026, and the school year readministration program plan for 2024, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent items? All in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The consent items are approved. Under section B, old business, we have none for tonight. Section C, new business, we have our personnel report. And at this time, you have the personnel report in front of you. We are going to approve down through I-9 and table I-10 through I-17 at this particular time, because we have some other issues that we're dealing with. So at this time, I need a motion to approve the personnel report from A-1 to I-9.
And with the change of I-9 going from two years to four years?
That's correct. The I-9, Mary Ratliff will be on four-year, and Lynn Gardell will be a four-year.
I make that motion?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion on the personnel report? All in favor of approving the personnel report from A-1 to I-9 and tabling I-10 through I-17 for tonight, please signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries, and the personnel report is approved as amended. We are now at our calendar items. Are there any questions for clarification on the calendar items as listed? Hearing none, we have exhausted our business for tonight, and having no further business to conduct, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion.
No, a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, we are.